Mr. Wazworth, would you do the honors of the pleasure to lead you to the flag?
Certainly, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wazworth.
Good evening, Honorable City Council Members, Mayor Burcroft, our City Treasurer, two, our City Attorney, Chief of Staff, Administrative Staff, and the Listening Audience. Today is Monday, April the fifth, twenty twenty-one, and this is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting. This meeting is being held electronically via the Zoom Meeting Telecommunication Platform. Tonight's meeting ID number is eight three two, two six eight three, six six nine eight. This meeting is being held pursuant to Public Act two fifty-four of twenty twenty and the resolution declaring a local state of emergency adopted by City Council on March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, for Resolution Number twenty-one dash zero nine three, which permits the remote attendance by members of a public body using telephonic or video conferencing means in certain circumstances, and to allow the public business of the Romulus City Council to be conducted in a manner that permits both the general public and members of the public bodies to participate by electronic means under circumstances allowed by law. Members of the public body must further identify specifically by stating the county, city, township, or village and state from which he or she is attending the meeting remotely. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online from the Zoom Meeting Application. To join this meeting by phone, call one six four six, five five eight, eight six five six. When prompted, enter the meeting ID number, followed by the pound sign. During the public comment portion of the meeting, the raise hand method will be used to address the City Council. Citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. And at this time, we will have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo.
President, Romulus, Michigan, Wayne County.
Councilman Barton.
Here, Romulus, Michigan.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
Here, Romulus, Michigan.
Councilwoman Tally.
I'm here, Romulus, Michigan.
Councilman Wazworth.
I'm here, Romulus, Michigan.
Councilwoman Webb.
Here, Romulus, Michigan, Wayne County.
And Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman Williams, you're muted. Romulus, Michigan, Wayne County. Thank you. Mr. Chair, we have a quorum for today's council meeting. Tonight's agenda is as follows. Number one agenda, number two approval of, sorry, number two minutes, number three petitioner, number four Chairperson's Report, number five Mayor's Report, six Clerk's Report, seven Treasurer's Report, eight Public Comment, nine Unfinished Business, ten New Business, eleven Communication, and number twelve Agreement. An emotion would be in order to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, for approval of agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair of all, yes, motion approved.
Agenda item two A, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on Monday, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at seven thirty P M.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we um, that, uh, that we approve of the minutes of the regular council meeting held March twenty-second of twenty twenty-one at seven thirty P M.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Wazworth, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of minutes from the regular council meeting, regular meeting held on Monday, March the twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at seven thirty. Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair of all, yes, motion approved.
Agenda item two B, approval of the minutes from the special meeting held on Monday, March the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M to discuss adoption of a resolution declaring a local state of emergency.
So moved for approval of the minutes from the special meeting held on Monday, March twenty-ninth.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the minutes from our special meeting held on Monday, March the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair of all, yes, motion approved.
Three petitioner, which we have no petitioners on the agenda this evening, number four is the Chairperson's Report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At six P M, we had a specialist study session to discuss the proposed twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year budgets. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for the Friday Walk. Everyone did a great job in City of Romulus. Our clerk, uh, Ms. Braggs, did a great job, Eva Webb, I wasn't, I'm glad on your birth. Edna, Tina Tally did a great job, really great Tina. Reverend Willis, the St. John's Lodge, Administration, uh, Mayor Burcroft, Administration did a great job. He was unable to attend, but he had great representation there. So I hope everyone had a, a great Easter. I want to bring up something to the Council and the Mayor and the City of Romulus. And I know Wazworth's gonna tease me on this. So, I have, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody that was sending out likes for my nephew that made a Free Press. I know you can't see this, this is Detroit Free Press. And I'm just gonna read one thing. On incredibly, Barton was the only male model from the United States invited to Versace. That's a modeling company? And I was wondering, Mr. Wazworth, why they didn't pick me? Okay, uh, see, I know he was gonna say.
Must pay attention.
Okay, thanks y'all, and I appreciate all, all the hits, uh, got over two, three hundred hits on that. Thank everyone, love you guys. Thank my nephew for hard work. And thank the City of Romulus. His father lived in Romulus, so another Romulus pride. At this time, I'm going to recognize our mayor, Leroy Burcroft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to request a unfortunate memorial resolution. You know, we've been in this battle with COVID, and we lost a good person this last week. And I'd like to ask for a resolutions for the, for the family of Willie Pruitt. Uh, he was a class of eighty-seven Romulus. Um, he leaves a wife and kids. And he went really quick. Um, last week, he went in not knowing, and he didn't come out. And so, uh, I just want to make sure we do a resolution recognizing him. He was a golf pro at Links of Gateway Golf Course. He was passionate about helping kids in life in general and learning golf and, uh, just a real shocker. And just ask that you keep, please keep his family in your thoughts and prayers and all those who are dealing with this awful COVID.
So moved, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
And just a quick comment, I knew him, I met him, he was a very nice, a very nice man.
Thank you, Mr. Wazworth. Can I get who supported that?
Support, Abdo.
Okay, Ms. Abdo. It's been motioned by Mr. Wazworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for memorial resolution. Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe? That concludes the Chairperson's.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes the Chairperson's Report.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the Chairperson's Report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Chair of all, yes, motion approved. Thank you.
Number five is the Mayor's Report.
Good evening, City Council, Treasurer, Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and all those in the audience. First, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to pass on that I'm glad that the Good Friday Walk went well. I could not attend, um, currently in a quarantine situation, follow the same rules that all our employees have to. I'm not COVID positive, but I am being quarantined, uh, and, and tested just to make sure. Uh, so I'm, I'm giving my report not from my office, but from my residence. Uh, I just have one action item tonight for City Council if you consider. Uh, and this is a recommendation from Darren Shelby, uh, our Captain of Police, Gary Harris, Purchasing Director. And this one is to concur with the Administration and Award Bid I T B twenty slash twenty-one dash twelve. Uh, that's the lowest, most responsive and responsible bidder, Outdoor Experts, Inc. Uh, that's for a two-year contractual service agreement for grass weed cutting, uh, for an as-needed, uh, work specified in the bid, uh, and for, that's for Ordinance and Public Safety Department. Uh, its funds have been verified and budgeted out of the General Fund, uh, Ordinance Weed Cutting Expense Account, and also to Council, that is a local vendor. Thank you.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wazworth, supported by Ms. Webb, for I T B twenty slash twenty-one dash twelve, for the two-year contractual service agreement, grass and weed cutting. Any discussion?
I can make a just, just a quick comment, like the mayor said, um, he's a local vendor. Not only is he a local vendor, I mean, lives in the city and owns a home and pays taxes here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wazworth. Any other discussion?
Yeah, through the chair.
Yes, uh, Ms. Tally?
Just a quick question for Gary. Um, I just want to make sure I'm clear, it says thirty-seven dollars per man hour for RNA and a hundred forty per hour for Outdoor Experts. I just want to make sure I'm clear what that means.
Gary, can you clarify that, please? Oh, sorry, yeah, um, so, uh, for Outdoor Experts, what that means is no matter how many people it takes, that's the price. RNA, what they were doing, and it came to a really similar price. Uh, they would have three or four guys, and each of them would get thirty-seven an hour.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I was thinking, I just wanted to make sure I was thinking right. Okay, thank you, Gary.
No problem.
Is there any other comments? Discussion? Hearing none? Roll call vote. Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe? Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair of all, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Number six is the Clerk's Report. Agenda item six A, for second reading and final adoption is Budget Amendment twenty twenty-one dash sixteen to transfer funds from the Major Roads Fund to the Local Streets Fund to work on a patching program in the Meadows subdivision for spring twenty twenty-one. This amendment was introduced at the March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one regular council meeting.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion for second reading and final adoption of the Budget Amendment twenty dash slash twenty-one to transfer funds from the major funds, account to the Local Street Funds for the patching at the Meadows subdivision.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe, for second reading, final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash sixteen for Local Streets. In discussion. Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair of all, yes, motion approved.
Thank you. Agenda item six B, for second reading and final adoption is Budget Amendment twenty twenty-one dash seventeen to recognize revenue received for the Play Everyone Challenge Grant, uh, Kaboom, and the anticipated expenditure related to implementing the project plan. This Budget Amendment was introduced at the May, I'm sorry, at the March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one regular council meeting.
Chair.
The motion by.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Mr. Mr. Wazworth, for second reading, final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash seventeen for rec- recreation. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair of all, yes, motion approved.
Six C, for second reading and final adoption is Budget Amendment twenty twenty-one dash eighteen to move funds from Reserve Park renovation to Wayne County allocation, Elmer Johnson's Restrooms, for the anticipated expenditures related to implementing the project plan. This Budget Amendment was introduced at the March twenty-second, twenty twenty-one regular council meeting. So moved.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Abdo, second reading and final adoption of Budget Amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash eighteen for the recreation. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe? Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair of all, yes, motion approved.
And the last item under the Clerk's Report, six D, this is a study session request. Mary Drurer, the Economic Development Coordinator and TIF and D D A Director, is requesting a thirty-minute study session for April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M to discuss Amendment to Chapter fifty-two, Article Four, Special Events, Section fifty-two dash eighty-six. The date and time are available for the study session request.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will move that we, that there be a special meeting on April the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M for the, um, a, a D D A Director.
Support.
Been motioned by Mr. Wazworth, supported by Ms. Abdo, for a study session for the Director for Monday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M to discuss Amendments to Chapter fifty-two, Article Four, Special Events, Section third, fifty-two dash twenty-six of the City Code of Ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Mr. Wazworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Chair of all, yes, motion approved.
Thank you, Council. That concludes the Clerk's Report. Number seven is the Treasurer's Report.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Clerk, Deputy Clerk, and Listening Audience. I have two announcements. Um, the first one is tax bills don't go out, summer tax bills do not go out until July first. But once those tax bills do go out, I just want our residents to know that they have the option, they can pay it in a one-time payment, they can make weekly payments, they can make monthly payments. We are here to accept payments whenever a resident is willing to make that payment. We will never turn you away, and, um, I spoke with a resident, and he asked me to share that information as a reminder to let people know that, um, if it is easy, easier for them, they're more than welcome to come to the Treasurer's Office, mail the payment credit card, whatever works for them, and we are here to gladly accept the payment and help them in any way that we can. So that was my first announcement. And then also, I wanted to read just, um, a couple of short paragraphs for the Wayne County website about, um, payment plans. And I just want to read it out to our residents and listening audience, just to make them aware that there are options out there. And if it's something that they're interested in, how to find out about those payment plans. So I'm just gonna read this directly from the website real quick, and then, of course, if you have any questions, you can always call my office at seven three four, nine four two, seven five eight zero. It says, "Due to the ongoing impact of COVID nineteen and an overwhelming demand for payment plans and appointments, the Wayne County Treasurer is extending the deadline for payment plan enrollment as well as foreclosure redemption until May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Taxpayers are encouraged to use the Wayne County Treasurer's Office online payment plan enrollment and remote payment methods throughout the redemption period. For tax, your assistant, and to make an appointment, taxpayers can contact our office by going online at treasurer.wayncounty.com. Appointments are required. There are no walk-ins and will, will be honored at this time, no walk-ins will be honored at this time. The Treasurer's Office is complying with the state and federal guidelines for social distancing and hygiene practices requiring a face mask before entering the building. People are requested to stand six feet apart in lines at the Treasurer's Office." So that's right on the Wayne County Treasurer's, um, main page. And so if the payment plan is something that you're already enrolled in, or you have questions about, about it, um, they've extended that foreclosure redemption until May fourteenth. And of course, if you have any questions, again, you can call our office. And that's all I have this evening under my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
You're welcome.
Number eight is public comment, and this is the portion of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address City Council. The raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. If you've joined this meeting online, use the raise hand icon from the meeting app. Tap the microphone icon to unmute yourself after you've been acknowledged. If you've dialed in using a touchstone phone, press the star nine, um, to raise your hand, and press star six to unmute yourself after you've been acknowledged. After you've been acknowledged, we ask that you just state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Additional time will be upon the approval of the Chairperson. If, uh, if you go over those three minutes and you haven't been approved by the, um, the Chairperson, then we, you will be muted. Um, and as a reminder, citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of public comment. And do we have anyone from the public wishing to speak? Mr. Chair, I do not see any raised hands. Let me just take one more look here. Nope. No one is requesting, no one from the public is requesting to speak, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, we'll close that part out.
Thank you. Number nine is unfinished business.
John?
Yeah, Mr. Wazworth?
I could, um, this, this should be for Roberto, but Mayor, is he here? I have a question. If not.
Yeah, fire away. I'll look at those.
My question is, when the, uh, when the thirty-fourth District Court opens up, if you look at the payment markings, when, when you come south on Wayne Road, and you make a left-hand turn into the court, as they, as they, as they look right now, uh, you can cross a W yellow line. Are the markings going to be changed for people turning into the court there, is my question?
Yeah, that's a good question. Uh, we'll, we'll find out. Um, I, I know that there, they have a tentative, uh, timeframe to open. I'm not aware of any changes to the marking, but let us confirm it, because that's a Wayne County road, and then we'll get back to you.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any more unfinished business from Council? Takes us to number ten, new business. Number eleven is communication.
Okay, Ms. Roscoe?
Thank you, through the chair. Um, first of all, I want to thank Stacy, our Treasurer, for giving out that information. So many times our residents think that, um, you know, we don't want to work with them, and there's always payment arrangements and, um, part pays on things, and, you know, a lot of times people think if they don't have all the money, then they don't bring any of the money as far as paying their bills, and, um, that was a lot of good information and from the Wayne County also. And I just want to thank, uh, our Treasurer Stacy for that. Um, but also, I just want to remind everyone that next Monday, I actually thought it was this Monday myself, but it was next Monday on the twelfth of April, um, yard waste collection starts again. And there's rules, um, you know, you have to have it in the proper containers and, um, so on and so forth. And another important thing to know is that when it comes to bushes and branches and so on and so forth, you can't just put anything out there. The only thing they're gonna pick up, uh, can't be any bigger than about five or six inches in diameter, three or four feet long, and they need to be bundled a- and tied together if, if you have numerous pieces of that. But them are just some things to remember, and if you've got questions as far as that goes, you can always, uh, call the D P W or City Hall, and they can, uh, inform you what will be picked up and what won't be picked up. But again, um, yard waste starts next Monday, the first full week in April, and that continues until the second full week in December. So, uh, just some good information to put out there and when everybody starts cleaning up their yards. But, um, as far as that goes, I'm, um, I hope everyone had a great Easter over the weekend, and, um, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roscoe.
Uh, through the chair?
Yes.
I'd like to send congratulations out to Jawan Howard, head coach of the Michigan Wolverines. He led them to the Big Ten during this regular season, and he was voted Coach of the Year and the winner of the Henry Abba Award. And he's the second coach to ever earn this, uh, to earn that honor at the U of M. And he was a member of the Fab Five in nineteen ninety-one, so Coach Howard, I salute you. Great job.
Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Williams has her hand raised.
Okay.
Yes. I, um, received, uh, some information, and this will be to the mayor to look into it and, uh, get back with me. With, uh, with the police department, when there's a lien rand, uh, who is authorized to run a lien on a business or a individual?
The mayor has his hand raised, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Yeah, there are cer- there's a whole protocol for who's allowed, who's trained, who's certified, so, uh, it, it's restricted. If we, if there's more information you want to give the P D that we can check out, or my office can check out, I'd be happy to. In fact, there's a, they actually, the state does, uh, lien audits, really to make sure that each individual local municipality is following that.
Yes, and I understand that, and this is what I want to bring to your attention, because the person was too afraid to come forth, uh, afraid of retaliation, but you have someone in ordinance that's running liens on individuals and businesses, and that needs to stop, it, it has to stop, it's unfair, um, and it's all because of election, election in time. And, and, uh, what I want to say to you, Mayor, is please, uh, we've had elections that has not been fair, has got really ugly, but I want to make sure that you're aware of what's going on and that you would, uh, would stop it because this particular ordinance person wrote up a ticket and then sent it to the person home after she read the, uh, uh, ran the lien. That cannot happen, it cannot happen, regardless of how a person choose to vote or who they su- uh, choose to support, they shouldn't be retaliated against. And this is going on, and I'm sure you're not aware of it, because, you know, somebody from your office, especially Julie, would have, would have said something. But before this election started, regardless of what people choose to do, we need to make sure everything that we're supposed to do is in order, we, we are to make sure that nobody is being violated because who they choose to support, and it appears that's what the issue is, so please, as soon as you can, look into it, I would like for this particular person, I won't say their name, but I would, uh, you know, call you and give that person name. I, I need to know, how many liens have she ran on individuals and also businesses, because I'm hearing that this is a normal procedure that she does. And as a city employee, it can't happen. Just because you're a city employee don't mean you can take advantage of different, uh, processes that's out there for city employees, it has to stop. And, and I wanted to bring this to your attention, because I know the person is on the line and listening, and I wanted, they were too afraid. And no resident, no employee should be afraid to express themselves, that bothers me. They shouldn't be afraid of intimidation or harassment, so we need to stop it before it starts, Mayor. I'm not saying at all that you was aware of it, or you have anything to do with it, I don't believe it, but it is an employee that's doing this, and, um, I would definitely want you to look into it and stop it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll definitely check it out, and my understanding is there's a fingerprinter who ran what, so we'll check it out.
Excuse me, Mayor, it's not about fingerprinting.
No, no, I mean, a, a electronic track.
Oh, okay, okay.
Audit of it, that's, I'd use that term loosely, it's not a actual fingerprint, but there is a, an audit trail of, uh, activity, so we'll look into it for sure.
Okay, because as, as they said it to me, and I said, well, I know our mayor is not aware of this, but I will make him aware of it, because he's not going to, uh, sit back and tolerate those type of activities, because a person chooses to support someone they don't like, that's, that's not, that's not good, and it's not a good look for our city. Thank you.
I did have one other one, uh, as well, if I could, uh, more positive, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Uh, just wanted to, to bring up the people to recognize, we had a young man, uh, Jalen Culver, who took second in the state for the Romulus High School Eagles wrestling team and, uh, worked hard all year, got to the finals and, and put on a heck of a match, and, uh, I just wanted to make sure that we recognize him, uh, uh, we'll, we'll do some kind of proclamation or recognize him as well, but I think that's quite a significant accomplishment, I think it's been a good ten years since we've had a state qualifier, and I'm excited that they're building that, uh, sport up, so just a shout out to, uh, Jalen for good job.
That's great, that's great news.
Uh, through the chair?
Yes, uh, Ms. Tally?
Yeah, I just want to say, thank you for the shout out you gave for the Good Friday Walk, um, you actually stole my thunder, you named everybody I wanted to name. Thank you for taking that off my plate, um, for us, you know, just for Christian, last week was Holy Week, you know, that's a very special week for me. Um, I just think about my Savior, um, and so thank you for that, we had a great Good Friday Walk, um, and I hope everybody enjoyed their holiday worship Easter or resurrection Sunday, um, I had a great weekend, the whole week for me was just awesome, just Holy Week is just very special for me. But I also wanted to give out a shout out also to, uh, Tanya Caulfield, they had an awesome, awesome event, uh, the Easter Celebration with a Twist in the parking lot of the municipal parking lot. And it was just, it just blew me away because of all the donations, all that people gave for this event, they had beautiful baskets that you would pay big dollars for in the store that people donated for the, I mean, many, it was so many, it was so much stuff there, it was ridiculous. And just donations, and then all the volunteers that helped with the candy bags, I think Ms. Abdo was a part of that with the Recreation Committee. I mean, it was just a awesome event, so I just want to shout out to Tanya, um, and just a great event for the, uh, residents, and then a shout out to the residents who came out, they were just in awe of all that was given out that day and how the whole thing was put on, so shout out to the residents who came out and participated, social distancing, and people had a lot of fun, I had fun, you know, we always out there having fun, so just to Mary Drew, her team, Tanya, everybody that was out there working hard, the staff, it was a top-notch event. Um, I looked forward to, it was just a lot of fun, um, it was just a lot of fun, so just shout out to the city. Again, I'm always saying teamwork makes the dream work, I mean, and that dream worked that day, so thank you for everything for the city.
Thank you, Ms. Tally.
Is there any more communication from Council?
Yes. Through the chair?
Yes, go, Ms. Williams.
I, I would be totally wrong if I didn't mention to the residents, we're still Forgotten Harvest is still at the high school every Tuesday. The only issue is now we start at eleven, because we have to be out of there by one fifteen, because school is in. So we had to be, we have to be out of the way for the buses, so all residents that, uh, that are in need, don't hesitate to come see us, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, uh, takes us to number twelve, adjournment, and that's eight oh eight PM.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wasworth, who supported that?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Abdo for adjournment, Mr. Wasworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.